Doing it.
Good evening, everybody. It's Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and this is a regular meeting of Moscow City Council. Haley.
Good evening. Please stand if you're able to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance as I fight with the charging court. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight we have two proclamations that we use to memorialize various worthy events that are going on. And our first proclamation tonight is for the Emergency Medical Services, or EMS Week proclamation. Whereas in nineteen seventy-four, President Gerald Ford authorized EMS Week to celebrate EMS practitioners and the important work they do in our nation's communities. And whereas emergency medical services are a vital component of public service. And whereas the members of Moscow Volunteer Fire Department and city career staff are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to high-quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illnesses or injuries. And whereas the members of Moscow Volunteer Fire Department consist of mostly volunteer, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, and firefighters, and trained members of the public. And whereas the members of these teams, whether volunteer or career, engage in countless hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical services of the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I Art Betke, Mayor of the City of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby recognize the week of May twenty-first to the twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-three as Emergency Medical Services Week in the city, and I urge all citizens in the community to observe the week and show your appreciation and thanks to the volunteer members of Moscow's Volunteer Fire Department. And here to receive the proclamation, we have Chief Brian Nickerson.
Hooray.
Wondered who was gonna step in with that.
Yes.
No question.
No, we do.
We could have made him sit for a still portrait.
Jump in it.
Thank you for the proclamation, Mayor, and the city council. You know, our volunteers work really hard, and our career staff works hard as well, so we greatly appreciate you recognizing the the community effort that they do and and the efforts that they do put in for three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and it's tough, but we have an outstanding group that does it, so I greatly appreciate it, and I know they thank you as well.
Thanks, Chief. Our second proclamation tonight is for the Memorial Day. Whereas Memorial Day, originally called Decoration Day, is a day of remembrance for those who've died in our nation's service. And whereas Memorial Day was initially proclaimed on May fifth, eighteen sixty-eight, by General John Logan, National Commander of the Grand Army of the Republic, in his General Order Number Eleven. And whereas Memorial Day was first observed on May thirtieth, eighteen sixty-eight, when flowers were placed on the graves of the Union and Confederate soldiers at Arlington National Cemetery. And whereas our predecessors fought in wars so that future generations would have freedom. And whereas they helped shape society that we know today, including our political, economic, military, and social systems, advances in science and technology, and cultural traditions that enrich our heritage. And whereas it is important on Memorial Day to reflect on whole-life memories of military personnel who fought and died for our country to preserve the rights guaranteed under the U.S. Constitution and to keep our nation strong. And whereas Memorial Day gives us the opportunity to renew our patriotism and to articulate our common desires to live in freedom and seek peace so that our nation's veterans will not have died in vain. Now therefore, I Art Betke, Mayor of the City of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby recognize May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three as Memorial Day in the city, and I urge all citizens to honor those who have died in service to our country. So we'll pass that on to the appropriate folks. So next up is the Consent Agenda.
Question, Mr. Mayor, before that. Who are the appropriate folks that we would give that to? Is it Legion Hall folks?
I would give it to the Legion.
I was just curious. Thanks.
I wasn't dumb.
Oh, well, thank you.
Okay, Consent Agenda, which consists of items that had been previously vetted by either the Administrative Committee or Public Works and Finance Committee, and consists mainly of routine or non-controversial items, though any item on the Consent Agenda can be removed by a member of council for separate consideration if they wish. Haley.
Sniped it from Gina this time. Your Honor, I move approval of the Consent Agenda as presented this evening. Second.
And Maureen seconds. Okay. No discussion. Hey, Sandra.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Drew.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
And Haley.
Aye.
Okay, Consent Agenda moves right along. Onto the regular agenda. At this time, it's time for the public work or public comment in the mayor's response time. And for the next fifteen minutes, divvied up into three-minute increments, members of the public go on up to the podium and tell us what's on your mind, as long as it's not on tonight's agenda, nor pending before Planning and Zoning Commission or the Board of Adjustment. Just announce your name, address, and in three minutes or less, tell us what's on your mind. Neat takers. Excellent, we've got somebody.
Tree Commission member.
Hi, you all. I want to say, oh, three oh five Palouse Court, I'm a renter, and my name's Nick. I'm a member of the Tree Commission with Gina over there, yeah. But I wanted to first off and say Ren Fair was spectacular, and I really enjoyed it, and it was my first Ren Fair in Moscow, so it was pretty awesome to see, but I did want to talk about something that was discussed last week, the streetscape, kind of downtown reconfiguration, and something that I was really disappointed with it didn't got brought up with CO2 emissions, right? Nobody talked about it, which is super disappointing to see the city pass the Climate Action Plan, which is super invigorating for me to move here as a PhD student studying climate change and get really excited about this, but then when something, a massive development project is brought up, isn't mentioned. So I did some numbers. I'm a numbers person. I'm a critical social scientist by trade, but I'm a numbers person, so the total amount of like CO2 emissions from concrete specifically for Phase One or Phase A of that plan is around thirty-two hundred tons of CO2 emissions, which is around fifty-five tons less than the twenty nineteen city emissions. So if you go into the Climate Action Plan, they bring up that number very specifically as a baseline. And all of the concrete, just for that one project of that one phase, is equivalent to the city's twenty nineteen emissions, which is pretty spectacular to think about, and that's equivalent, if you want to envision thirty-six hundred tons, is around like forty-seven thousand refrigerators running for one year. Or if I had a private jet, I'd go around the Earth twenty-six and a half times. So we're talking in a massive amount of CO2 from just the concrete of the development, so and that's not to even break it up, and that's not even to put it in, it's just the production of the OPC or the the ordinary Portland cement, which is the main component in concrete. And just, I really hope that that's brought up in the future, is CO2 in relation to this streetscape plan and just in general regarding city, kind of just conversations writ large. Yeah, thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks for the observations. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay, moving right along. Next up is an ordinance amending Moscow City Code Title Four Appeal Procedures, presented by Cody Riddle.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As mentioned, this is an amendment or proposed amendment to clarify procedural requirements associated with appeals. We did present this to committee here, I guess, just a week ago, but wanted the full council's input before proceeding to planning and zoning. As noted at committee, the amendment does address appeals both zoning administrator decisions or determinations to the Board of Adjustment, and then also lower body decisions to city council. We believe both are necessary to provide a clear process for the consideration of appeals. The appeals actually standards have historically been located in multiple sections of city code, as well as a separate resolution. As you'll recall, you took the first step in cleaning some of that up with the repeal of that resolution that dates back to two thousand, back on May first of this year. We believe this amendment that we've drafted now is an important second step to finish cleaning things from a procedural standpoint, so I'd like to walk you through kind of just the highlights briefly. The first thing that you'd notice in your packet, the amendment includes the repeal of Chapter Ten, Section Ten Eight, which eliminates appeal provisions from being located right now in two separate chapters of city code. The next, the remaining substantive changes are all located within Chapter Eight. That includes Section Eight Two, Eight Dash Two, which again is the appeals of the administrative or zoning administrator decisions. The remainder of the changes are in Section Eight Five, which deal with appeals to city council. Both sections that I mentioned do establish grounds for which appeals can be filed. Both also include direction on how an appeal will be handled, both before and at a public meeting. Both provide specifics on how the appeal meetings themselves will be handled. And then finally, the amendment codifies language for actions council might take when considering an appeal. I would finally mention, there are just a couple things that the amendment includes. It cleans up incorrect or dated references, as well as dated language in the in the table of contents. With that, we believe this simple amendment will provide a lot better structure and clarity for all users, including ourselves. And with your blessing, we'll proceed with the required hearing at planning and zoning before bringing final language back to you for consideration. So that's our ask of you this evening, is to direct us forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Could you go back one slide, please? Two slides. Oh, now three slides. It's only one, okay. I just, it seems to me that we need to be really clear with our commissions, that they put their reasons down very clearly in terms of why they're making their decision. So that we know what we're, you know, does it violate the statutory constitutional provision? The answer is, you know, we had one of those recently, and I think the issue there is, it was really important that the commissions articulate their reasoning so that we can then articulate our reason if we're going to uphold it or reversing.
Yeah, absolutely, and certainly as from staff perspective, or liaisons to those boards and commissions, kind of assisting them, and sometimes that's difficult on the spot in the heat of a of a public meeting, but helping them with that certainly.
Haley.
I just want to make sure I'm not missing. We're mostly trying to corral everything into the same location, that the, there are no changes to what would be included in like the statement of finding, or I can't remember what the phrase is, that like Amy helps put together, but like those decisions are just getting pulled into the same section, right? Like, there's no changes to what those decisions are.
Substances.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, all of that is new. So the language, so the language to identify where appropriate grounds for an appeal? Excuse me. So that's all new language, doesn't exist in the code today. If you're referring to the actual criteria for a condition use permit or a variance, those criteria are not being modified tonight.
Aren't these, aren't these ones pretty similar to this, to the criteria? I feel like this is a similar phrasing.
Actually quite different.
Okay.
And happy to, we could review those briefly if but they are, so the grounds for bringing an appeal are are quite a bit different. I could just give you a quick rundown on
It seems like this is meant to be an it's a win-win because it's also meant to help the applicant understand what makes sense to seek the
And the same criteria would apply to the council's decision to ensure that the the lower body adequately reviewed, used the appropriate criteria in making the decision, documented any conditions of approval that they imposed, so those would still be in place, that you'd be reviewing their action against those adopted criterion standards. This is just clarifying under what grounds an affected person can file an appeal. And it's really intended to give them direction to focus their appeal on something that the council can act upon. Not just something that may be extraneous, that the council really can't respond to. So it's really just intended to provide them guidance to specifically, here are the areas you need to focus on to, for you to identify that how you feel the board erred or the commission erred in their decision.
And did we, sorry, Mr. Mayor, follow up if that's okay? And so did we pull these criteria from other cities in Idaho who have used it, or are we? Because I'm excited because it feels like it is a really helpful rubric for everybody and will make me feel better if we've got an ask from someone to like re-review what Board of Adjustment came to the conclusion with, but
And some of this language was actually in the old resolution from two thousand, even the the criteria there. I mean, it's wordsmithed a little bit, but the I think it was attached to your packet, the resolution that we've again repealed. Some of that was carried forward for clarity here.
I really, really appreciate what can be somewhat of a daunting task, especially if you feel you've been denied something or wronged in any way. This is very clear, and it, there are deliberate steps in it that are very accessible, and that is really what we want in the end. We want our citizens to be able to interact with us and not just, you know, watch us on TV because we're kind of a big deal. So I just think it's really important that, yeah, and I would, I would make a motion, or I guess we don't, we don't need to, do we?
No, it's just general direction this evening. Because this affects specifically the council's appeal process of your review of decisions of a lower body, we just wanted to get your consensus that the direction was appropriate before we go back and have the required public hearings. Because this actually exists within our zoning code, modification or amendment to that requires a hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission and a hearing before the city council. So you'll actually have a hearing on this. This is just a preliminary review to make sure the language was consistent with how you'd like to see that process be directed.
I do feel probably strongly it's ready to go to P and Z.
So I guess my question is, if we are doing a vote of council, should there, when it gets moved, should we articulate one of those five things in our motion? We reverse that decision because it violates statutory or constitutional provisions. Do we need to articulate which of those five provisions justify our decision?
When acting on a specific appeal, that would be very helpful, yes.
But that's usually also, isn't that written in generally from the staff? I mean, like, proposed.
Because I was thinking recently that we made a decision on one of them, and
Right, no, I was just thinking, I don't think they had those options. I'm just thinking how you generally, how staff generally puts stuff out, which is helpful.
Sure, certainly, if the appeal will come to the council directed using one of these five grounds for the appeal, then we can craft a written decision to either affirm or to reject that claim, so that's supported in your written decision.
Great, thank you for cleaning this up.
Yeah.
Okay, by and large, sounds like take it to P and Z and see what they have to say. Okay, next up, we have the, it says here Pullman Moscow Airport, but no, 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 that's not right. Pullman Airport, Federal Grant Acceptance Authorization. Bill.
Well, I was tempted to write that, but on the grant application, it stated otherwise. Got to be consistent to the application that was in your file. So this evening, we have a resolution for your consideration to authorize the acceptance of up to ten million dollars in additional federal funding for the the airport terminal and apron project. So the ten million is made up of three point five million dollar requests the airport made in FAA supplemental program funding. That request is still under review, so that one has not been granted at this time. The remaining funding was six million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand in bipartisan infrastructure law or bill law funding. That funding actually has been approved, so that grant agreement is currently in process. The local match for these is intended to be funded by a recently announced five hundred thousand dollar grant from the State of Idaho Aeronautics Division that will be state funds that could be utilized to as local as local match for the federal funding. And then there's additional private donations that are currently underway that are anticipated to fill the remaining match gap. So there's a resolution in your packet. Again, this this is to pre-authorize acceptance before we actually have the grant agreements. Typically, when we receive the grant agreements from the FAA, it is a very quick turnaround. So we have adopted this process to pre-authorize acceptance of the grants. And the two grant applications are attached to the resolution as exhibits for your review as well. So staff this evening would recommend approval of the resolution. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm gonna make a motion, so if somebody has questions.
I've got one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Is, what? I feel like we've been blessed with the opportunity for a lot of grants, both state, local, federal, all those great things. What's left to fund? What do we need?
A little more local match, essentially.
Because the five hundred would get us
Down to one point six million remaining in local match.
Okay, that would need to come from the owners and partners, the six.
Where the airport itself, with past year boarding fees.
There you go.
Okay, I move that we pre-authorize the acceptance of up to ten million in additional federal funding and approve the associated resolution. Second.
And seconded by Sandra. Further discussion?
We like money.
Yes, we do. Drew.
Aye.
Julia.
Aye.
Gina.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Sandra.
Aye.
Okay, that one passes, and this briskly takes us Yep, we got the reports. This takes us to the end of the regular agenda, so. Yes. I would never jinx this.
Two minutes.
So, okay, Maureen, you're up.
First one, the farmer's market. I'll just report that Saturday was a big success and that that one of the things that happened is, is that we hosted at the farmer's market table the artist and new vendor Wendy Schmidt of Barefoot Canvas, and she was signing posters for people right there at the farmer's market, which I think was a great way of supporting her as well as promoting the farmer's market. And actually, there were some booths that were just standing room only, trying to get, there were so many people that have signed up this year in one space, it's pretty exciting. We also got a presentation on the downtown streetscape, and yes, we did not talk about some of the issues you wanted us to talk about, but we'll be conscious of that for the next time. Then we actually had an URA meeting, and it started out with a presentation by Tony Boils from the University of Idaho, talking about the university's plan, our potential plans, and that they sent an RFP out there to try and get developers to buy into or submit applications or proposals on land adjacent to the Sixth and Jackson Street property. And their hope is that they're also talking about Knit, the design architect company, which was usually, they're working on the police department. They designed it. They can take that back, but we're now, are you gonna do the new one, too?
So we didn't do the new police department. The university recently purchased the old police department.
But didn't you design the old police department?
We did not. We weren't in existence enough.
Knit is the design architect for the previous police department building.
That is true. So the previous building, which was now purchased by the University of Idaho, which will be the new Pritchard Gallery in years to come. Knit, a local architecture firm, who also happens to be my full-time employer, we are doing the design work.
Well, and construction is supposed to be completed by two thousand twenty-four. It's clearer in this piece of paper than what he just said. Okay, I will also say that the other thing that just came up is that we are waiting for the proposals on the Sixth and Jackson Street property, and we have those, and we're gonna start looking at them and discussing them on, at our meeting on Thursday, and there's two that came in.
Okay, Gina.
P and Z was canceled last week. And that was kind of downer because I look forward to that group. The Tree Commission, and I think Nick can probably attest to my absolute dread of the fact that I missed the meeting. My entire month has been blown. I sobbed for a little bit, and then I went, oh, my God, it was horrible.
You did plant some trees, though. You did plant trees.
We did plant some trees, that's true. They were handing out seedlings this weekend, and there were three different kinds, and those of you that want extra credit with me, just remember what they were. I'm not gonna tell you now. But then we all went through what is one of our beautiful things here in our community with our university, graduation. Congratulations to everybody that made it through their higher education journey. And I too sat through a very lovely and extensive graduation at Gonzaga that went five hours. There's not a chair on the planet that is comfortable after five hours, but congratulations. That's all, sir.
Julia.
Well, Transportation Commission was canceled due to a lack of a quorum, but I did get to go to Arts Commission, which is lots of fun. And I have a few announcements from them in case you are interested in local art. The Transit Center art, the sculptures at the Transit Center are up this past week, so go look at those. The storm drain murals go up on May eighteenth on Art Walk Day, our Art Walk Evening. And then on May eighteenth, there'll be eight host locations in addition to those new storm drains, so that's pretty fun. June Art Walk, which is the biggest event of the Art Walk season, has twenty-six host locations.
What date is that? I'm sorry.
The thirteenth. Okay, we're doing good. The Thursday, June the fifteenth. Just because Art said we were gonna end earlier. Read this letter that we got from this third grader. It's really short. It's really cute. All right. Dear Art Commission, there are old rundown buildings around town that I think could be made pretty by painting on them. I think third graders from each school should paint the old buildings because the old buildings do not look good or great. They look gray and not very colorful. Also, lots of people would rather go to see nice-looking buildings around town. Another reason is that making art could be a way for third graders to express emotions. For example, making art could be a way for students to show emotions like happiness or sadness. In addition, painting a building would be fun for students. We would be able to work together, laugh, and then in the future, come back to the building and remember the fun we have. I believe having third graders paint old buildings to help make the community look pretty. Thank you, Clara. Was an awesome letter and a good idea. We are following up to find Clara.
I'm gonna actually follow up to that pretty quickly because I do know that there is a person in town who has been working, trying to work with Megan Cherry to talk about painting the Eden Youth Center and having kids do that.
Yes, we're gonna connect Clara.
So, good stuff. Okay, reports. I, I think this happened before we had our meeting, but if I repeat myself, I apologize. Moscow Volunteer Fire had their graduation, and I got to be there with Mr. Bellnap and the mayor, and Haley popped in. At the end, but you were there, and it's, I, you know, I'm a sucker for graduations. I don't like to sit there, and I've never gotten them my own because they're boring, but for others, it's a pretty cool thing, right? And I had a really great time, and it was short, and it was, it was great. They also got awards for being involved in life-saving measures, and so it was, it was a great thing to be a part of and to see everyone try to look like they weren't excited and didn't care, and they cared a lot, and I love that, so it was fun. I think that made up for you not being able to go to Tree Commission. It was a pretty cool thing.
I'll take that.
All right, and then the following week, the Moscow Fire Volunteer Fire Department had the regular meeting. And as you can imagine, when the students leave, things get a little skimpy over there, so there's a lot to talk about how to make it not how to fill, how to fill voids, and that will happen. We have, like the chief said, we have a great crew out there, and they're working hard, and so go to those meetings and just see them plugging along all the time, and it's, it's a, it's a great thing to see. They do some work that no one likes, and it's often really hard, and you can't breathe, or it's tragic, and they just go out there and do these really great things, and I'm proud of what we have here in Moscow. Nick, I was really excited to hear you shout out about the Ren Fair. Got to be a big part of that, and it was, it was fun, and the weather held, which was amazing. I mean, so beware next year. That's all I can say, right? But this year was great. It was really nice. I love Ren Fair. It's a, it's a fun way to welcome. I don't know if you say welcome spring back because it often snows, but it's a great way to just to celebrate our great little community, and it's one of my very favorite events. So it was, it was fun. We had a few different very favorite events. So it was, it was fun. We had a few different additions, and we're trying to get more food vendors back, and other vendors back now that COVID's ended. So stay tuned, we're working on that. And then, upcoming event besides URA, which I'm excited for on Thursday, MP Back, which I'm also excited for on Thursday, is on Thursday. Thursday's a big day in my life, right?
Big day.
There is also a joint event by the LaTah County Historical Society and Inland Oasis at Moscow Brewing. It's a, it's a movie that was made ages ago called Out in the Middle of Nowhere. Just come. I could give a preview, but I don't want to spoil anything. So come, enjoy the movie, learn some things, enjoy the two great nonprofits that work really hard, and have some great refreshments of any kind that you want at Moscow Brewing. So I hope to see you there. And I think that's all I have.
Drew?
Yeah, a couple items. Parks and Rec, attended that meeting. Nothing really pertinent to bring for council, but besides, a great group of folks trying to do good things, and really just trying to dial in their survey to turn in as we get things ready. So that's probably the biggest. Later summer, we're going to go tour a couple parks around town, so looking forward to that. Affordable, Fair and Affordable Housing Commission, hope, look in your email council members for the letter that was sent to us. I think it's something that those folks have put a lot of effort into, that thing that they're passionate about. And I am happy to have a conversation now or after this meeting about that. But there's some things that are important to, I think, talk about before council here in the coming weeks. Then besides that, went to Ren Fair as well. It was a great stop by. Been riding my bike for Bike Month. And so rain, rain or snow, no snow yet, but been riding it. And then on Saturday, two, two events helped. The Cow Ripkin Baseball League here in town redo the Bears Field. They're working on redoing the dugout, so did a demolition over there, as they get that ready for the Major League to play there. Not major, Moscow Major, yeah. For clarification, that is 10 to 12. But, and so that was great to go volunteer at that. And then also went to, not as long as Gonzaga, but went to U of I's commencement, watched a couple friends graduate. So lucky to live in a town that appreciates education. So that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great.
I do have a follow-up question. How's hiring been for the pool? Did that come up at all at Parks and Rec? Are they doing okay, or do we need to be?
I think there's, there's not, they are hiring people.
We're not worried yet, though.
They're not, there's always room to hire people.
Love that.
So I don't, I don't, I don't have numbers or figures, but Greg seemed to, he said to keep on applying.
I love that. Super. Yeah, we, Moscow Volunteer Fire was on the third, our meeting was on the first, I had to pull up the calendar to make sure. So you're, yeah, I caught the tail end of that. I came sprinting down Quail Run to catch the tail end of that, because I was able to attend the Teacher of the Year event for Moscow Education Association, the 1912 Center, celebrating some of my old teachers who are retiring. So like, that was really fun. Chief Frye and I got asked to help evaluate blind applications for Teachers of the Year, and they gave me a free dinner from Loco Grinds for my hard work, so that was fun. I was the Lord of Coin at Renaissance Fair in Kid Village, or the Kingdom Over the Hill, which was kind of fun. They were doing souvenir coin token things, facilitating donations. So I had a frock and everything, so that was fun. I love, I love Ren Fair. Got my first sunburn, helmin at Ren Fair, that's how it goes. So I've got Human Rights Commission tomorrow, and Smart Transit tomorrow as well. After that, I'll be going to the fairgrounds to vote for our library board election. I missed early voting. And some fun reminder, so it is Bike to Month, Bike to Work Month. And so in honor of that, on Friday, the Pathways Commission from 7 to 9, if you come by Main and Sixth, we'll have free coffee and tokens to spend at the farmer's markets, as well as some free pastries. I'm going to make sure I got the times right. The Pathways Commission will be at the market this Saturday tabling. And then on Sunday, a really cool bike tour, connecting some of our newer parks together, starting at 1:30 from. They give the address as 382 Steiner. I think we're starting technically at the NRS parking lot. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
And so it's a nice leisurely pace. I'm not a, I'm a, I can handle that stretch of paths, so I'll, you know, it's, my sister's getting married, otherwise I'd be there. And I was going to share, what I asked that we could do as giveaways is shower caps are the perfect thing to keep rain off your bike seat. And I was like, we should ask the hotels if they reclaim shower caps that don't get used, that they have to throw out. And we didn't get there this year, but pro tip. Maybe I'll raid my own stash of shower caps from hotels. And I think that's all I got. That's what I got.
Cool. Okay, for me, I was also at the Fire Department's Graduation Life Saving Awards, along with Sandra, Haley, and Bill. And the Life Saving Awards are involved with crews who actually go out and have to administer CPR and have it result in success. So, good for them. There were three different versions of those between December and now. So, good on them. Nice work. Went to Stepping Stones and gearing up for receipt of applications for assistance to either disabled people or organizations that work with disabled to make things a bit easier for them and keep them incorporated into society. We had the Public Service Recognition and Employee Recognition Event last week, too, which featured tasty hamburgers and things, maybe with the burned-off arm hair from those who were barbecuing. And that was great. Gave out the champ's award, keep your eyes on the display downstairs in the lobby for our new employees who Rookie of the Year, external service, internal service, and, yeah.
You also mentioned that there were so many people, they ran out of burgers.
Yes, they did. So very successful event, and it's a great way to recognize the good work that our city employees do. Really good. Leadership Moscow had its graduation, and put forth another cadre of folks out into the world that are educated about what it means to be a leader in town, and how to apply that knowledge. And today featured the delight of going out to three first grade classes at West Park Elementary, and talk about how the city runs, and answer questions that ran the gamut from A to Z. You never know what a first grader is getting ready to ask you. It is a daunting inquisition, to be sure. And lastly, coming up on the 31st, is the top-out ceremony at the airport. The last piece of iron goes into the terminal. And so that happens at 2 o'clock PM. But if you want to go there, you need to RISVIP to the Airport Management Sherry. So anyway, that should be a fun occasion to watch the last piece of iron go in up top, and then the rest of the airport will proceed from there. Got anything, Bill?
Nothing for staff this evening.
Okay. With that, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned.
Nice. Crazy.